Seated. Good evening. My name is Isaac Hong. I am the president of San Marino City Club. Before we start, please arise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. On behalf of the San Marino City Club, I would like to welcome the candidates for the governing board of the San Marino Unified School District. Your courage to run for the position inspire all of us. I also welcome the audience here, who will ultimately cast their votes to determine the outcome of the election. I also wish to thank the Board of Directors at the City Club putting together this forum. Please stand to be recognized if you are one of our board members. Please stand. Thank you. And I also like to especially thank our second vice president, Stephen Choi, who's leading this effort. And Stephen is in the back. So our moderator Mitch will explain why Stephen is not in the limelight tonight. Okay? Before we start this, I'd like to share with you the mission of San Marino City Club. The mission is to secure for the citizens of San Marino Unified School District the best civic, educational, and cultural services and facility possible, and to encourage and promote the highest standards of citizenship among its membership. So I hope that this forum will showcase City Club's best civic services in town. I personally invite you to join the City Club. Together, we can make San Marino community a better place. So our October dinner meeting will be held at the Huntington Library, and our November dinner meeting will be at the, likely the high school hosting the Royal Court from the Tournament of Roses. So all these are very exciting programs that we can get together and enjoy one another in the community. So please check out our website at www.sanmarino-cityclub.org. Okay, so it's time to bring out our moderator Mitch Lehman. Mitch does not need much introduction. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Mitch Lehman.
You know, the last time that was said about me, Isaac, the last time it was said about me was at a football banquet, and the president of the Football Booster Club said, and here's someone who doesn't need any introduction, Mitch Lehman, and he pronounced my name wrong. And I said, well, apparently I do need an introduction to you because it's Lehman, but no big deal. It doesn't matter. Lehman, Lehman, who cares? I like, the Lehman family is much richer than the Lehman family, I can tell you that. I see Linda, Linda Delatorre, she's taking pictures of me over here. How are you, Linda? And, you know, I noticed Stephen Choi gets the biggest round of applause everywhere he goes. What is it like working with this guy? I mean, is it because he fixes everybody's technological problems, right? That they are just like, you know, because they, oh yeah, Assistant Superintendent, oh, it's a Stephen Choi, and it's like, you know, party poppers go off in the air, but yeah, he's a very talented young man. And I want to welcome our fire chief and our police chief, they're right back there, John Incontro, our police chief, and our fire chief, Mario Rueda. Uh-oh, someone's yelling at me to do something. What are you saying there, Gretchen? Your show was last Wednesday. I'm sorry. What would you like me to say?
I just wanted to say Acting City Manager, Rueda.
Oh, that must have happened today. Acting City Manager, Rueda. Well, no wonder he's got his uniform off and this beautiful light sport coat on. Yeah, breaking news. It broke in front of me. And I see Lisa Link, a former school board member is here. Thank you, Lisa. And if I missed any more dignitaries, I apologize. You're all dignitaries. For our candidates, I want to dovetail on what Isaac said. I will open by saying thank you, in all caps, by the way, for putting your name on a ballot and running for office in this specific case, a seat on the San Marino Unified School District's Board of Education. It's one of the absolute highest forms of community involvement that is possible. Many, if not most, residents of a town prefer to complain about the way things are handled, but very few of them are willing to stand for election and actually handle things. There will be no losers on November 8th. Thank you for your willingness to participate in local government. Thank you very much. This is indeed a very special election coming up on November 8th for a total of four seats on the San Marino Unified School District's governing board. A one-year seat will come, excuse me, a two-year seat, one two-year seat, I got to get this right, one two-year seat will come from the race between Mackenzie Marie Brown and Francesca Gill, and we have seated them in the same vicinity to allow voters an extra dimension to those two candidates, Mackenzie and Francesca. Three seats will be determined by the race between Jim Barker, C. Joseph Chang, Joanna Lamb, and Shelley Ryan, and we've also seated them accordingly. I mentioned to Superintendent Linda Delatorre that I would like her to explain to all of you why there are four seats and why one of them sunsets in two years, but to be quite honest with you, I have already heard the explanation about 25 times, and I still have no idea why it is the way it is. It just is. All this means one thing is certain. Jane Sean is the most relaxed person in the auditorium. Jane Sean, welcome. A incumbent, can I call you an incumbent even though you're not in the election? A sitting school board member, that's pretty accurate. Speaking of all this, and speaking of this auditorium, the Kenneth F. White Auditorium was named for, of course, Kenneth F. White, who was a teacher in the San Marino Unified School District from 1938 to 1950, and principal of Huntington Middle School from 1950 to 1973. About 20 years ago, I received a handwritten letter from Mr. White's widow, who at the time had relocated to Washington State. She told me how proud she was of her husband, but expressed her dismay that occasionally the name of this room ended up in the Tribune as the Huntington Middle School Auditorium. I assured Mrs. White that I would make it my personal mission to adhere to its full and proper name. Earlier this year, I met with Huntington Middle School Principal Daryl Topalian, who also volunteered to take up that cause, as I have with every HMS principal since, and I challenge all of you in the San Marino education community to make a note of it. And we opened this forum in memory of Kenneth F. White. While monetary contributions are a necessary necessity in today's world, I feel additional respect is due to someone who has been honored based on the quality and quantity of his commitment to young people rather than the size of their check. Kenneth F. White, great San Marinian. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Ken. San Marino Unified School District Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Stephen Choi is a, sorry Linda, you can relax, Assistant Superintendent Stephen Choi is involved in this forum as a San Marino City Club board member, but we assure you that he had no previous knowledge of the questions that will be asked this evening, and his participation is only involved making the proceedings more fair and more equal to all candidates. So here are our seven candidates. Jim Barker, Shelley Ryan, Joanna Lamb, C. Joseph Chang, Francesca Gill, and Mackenzie Marie Brown. So we're going to start with our opening statements. Each candidate has, I believe, two minutes for opening statements. We'll go from Mr. Barker down, and then later on when we do the closing statements, we'll go in the opposite order. So you ready to go, Mr. Barker? I want to point out that he's the first candidate I've ever seen at a San Marino election wearing suspenders.
Thank you, Mitch. So I think it's interesting that Mitch would mention Kenneth White, and I hadn't planned on adding that, but I was here at school when Kenneth White was here, and actually I sang for his wife in the choir right in this auditorium. And my experience at the San Marino schools is the reason why I'm still here today. It's the reason why a lot of my friends decided to raise their families here in San Marino. And it's also the reason why I'm here tonight, because some of the people that I grew up with are trying to decide whether or not they're going to put their own grandkids into the school system, and that caused me pause. So I wanted to get to the very simple comments on what I think that's going on in this school to begin with. I think the education is great, but I think people don't understand what a struggle it is all the time to make this school work. So I brought these bottles here just to kind of show you. So this is the bottle that is the water that is actually the total amount of money that's needed to run this school, and this is the money that's come from the state right here. So this money right here, that's what we get from the state. So you can see we're not quite there yet, so that is about, we get about $30.4 million there. So then you have the school foundation, which is not an absolute, so this is the most they could possibly give. And so you sit there and you dump this into that, and... So you can see you're not quite there, and that is every single school year at this school. And that doesn't include the emergency, like if the air conditioning goes out, or sewer line breaks, or you have to put a fence around the school. So all of a sudden, you're taking that money, stop, okay, so I'll go back to that.
Go back to that in your closing statement, I guess.
Yes.
Next up, Shelley Ryan. Shelley, two minutes.
Thank you so much, Mitch. Good evening, and I want to first thank the San Marino City Club and the San Marino Unified School District for hosting this forum, and Mitch Lehman for your service to our community. During my two terms on the San Marino School Board, I have worked hard to ensure that San Marino students and their families have successful educational experiences in our schools. I am committed to continuing the gains in student achievement achieved during my tenure as well as continuing efforts to ensure that the dollars we receive to fund education are actually spent on the students and in the classroom. I have an English degree from the University of British Columbia, a master's in education psychology, and a master's in school administration and leadership. My extensive career and passion in education has spanned almost four decades, from teaching students to working as a school administrator and as a member of the San Marino Board of Education. I believe I have demonstrated my commitment to our community by being honest, forthright, transparent, and collaborative in my work on the board. My children attended Valentine, Huntington, and San Marino High School and have gone on to successful careers after college. That success is in large part attributable to the quality of educational experiences they had in our schools. I hope that this evening you will learn a little bit more about who I am and what I stand for as you decide who should govern our schools for the next four years. Thank you.
Shelley, right at the money there. You had five seconds left. Good job, though. Next up is Joanna Lamb. Joanna?
Thank you. Hi, I am new to this community. Our family moved here last spring from Temple City. Like many other newer families, we decided to relocate to San Marino for the school district. Since we've been here, we have felt welcomed, and we feel deeply passionate about all things related to this community. Because I am new to this community, I am fairly new to this school, here are some things I would like to share about myself. I am a parent. I am very blessed to be the parent of three beautiful children. My oldest daughter, who is almost six, is a kindergartner at Carver. She may seem quiet when you first meet her, but you will soon learn that she has the biggest heart. I have two younger babies, another girl, and a boy, who will both eventually attend Carver as well. I am a business owner. I have operated my own business for the last few years. Prior to that, I was a CFO of a corporation where I led a successful acquisition. I have extensive experience in budgeting, financial analysis, and auditing. I've also spent seven years at FINRA, the largest regulator for all securities firms and banks doing business in the U.S. I think my professional experience speaks to my character and strong work ethics. Being a business owner means that I am constantly honing down on my leadership skills. It means that I am a decision maker, both on the macro and micro level. It also means that I am a communicator. I communicate needs and listen to what is needed, and above all, it keeps me open-minded and flexible. I have no doubt that my professional experience will contribute to the skills needed to serve on the board, and my passion to give back to the community will drive upon what's needed to enhance the San Marino School District. My love for my children and my hope for their future fuels me to become a role model for them. I like to lead by example, and I feel that serving on the board will fulfill that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. C. Joseph Chang?
Good evening. First of all, I would like to honor San Marino City Club hosting such a wonderful voter forum to the community. Thanks to the President, Mr. Hong, and the director. Secondly, I want to say thank you to Mr. Lehman, who has been an emcee for the last two decades. Tonight, I would like to share what I have done for our school district from 2001 to 2022. First, San Marino Unified School District is objectively the number-one ranking performing school district by the California Department of Education. Based on the API and the CAASPP, since I elected in 2001, all four schools are recognized with a national blue ribbon and a California Distinguished School honor. I also advocate and help fund the Titan Awareness Center, high school and middle school, create the Academic Advisory Council to allow the public to participate and voice their interests. I initiated the partnership to develop the CareTech STEM Research Course program for San Marino High School in 2017, strengthen excellence in our academic program and modernize facility, including the Titan football stadium in 2005, Bass Center in 2019 for the middle school, create a world-class program, continues to run in Huntington Library on the humanity class in 2016. Next three projects we have done...
Joseph, we're getting the stop sign. There we go.
The school parent for the last...
We have the stop sign. Sorry about that, Joseph. We can pick this up in the closing statement as well, I think. Next up is Francesca Gill. Francesca?
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and Mitch, thank you for moderating tonight. As a longtime resident and with family ties to San Marino that go back about 65 years, a parent of two children in the San Marino School District, I am deeply engaged, invested, and committed to continue and to elevate the excellence of this school district. My mom was one of six children who were born and raised here, and I'm sure at some point one of you went to school with one of my cousins or uncles or aunts, the Sermanka family. I will bring a fair, balanced, and rational voice to the school board. My motivation is threefold. I want to engage more deeply with the decisions and policies that affect all of our children, the high achievers, the middle-of-the-road, the special needs, high-risk. They all deserve equal attention. Secondly, my investment to this community as a homeowner and parent. I want to invest my time in a worthwhile cause, and our children are our legacy. They deserve to be our primary focus, as it will be for me. And third, to commit to our community. I do not see this position as a stepping stone. I am here and will stay here as a champion for the four As for our district. Academics, athletics, arts, and activities all go hand-in-hand, and we cannot have one without the other. Lastly, I would like to focus on a comprehensive roadmap for the direction of our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mackenzie Marie Brown?
At first, I'd like to thank the City Club for hosting this event, Mitch for moderating, and for everyone out here in the audience. Thanks for coming out, and anyone watching the replay later on. I'd also like to thank the six candidates up here. I think it's really special that we all stepped up for our community tonight. I want to build on San Marino's strong legacy and create a school system to foster the next generation of global citizens. This can be accomplished with strong academics, arts, athletics, activities, and also by focusing on the mental health and emotional well-being of our students. As a parent of young children, I want to be sure that in today's age with increasing pressures that our schools are there to support them. This can only be achieved by a board that collaborates with each other and with all of our stakeholders in the community. I'm a lawyer, I am analytical, I am practical, and I advocate for children every day as a prosecutor specializing in crimes against children, and I will be an advocate for all the children within our schools. But most importantly, I'm a mother. I have a first grader at Valentine, and my twins will start next year. I offer a unique perspective to the board as a parent of younger children, a perspective that is missing on our current board. San Marino USD has its challenges, including increasing infrastructure needs, safety concerns, and declining enrollment. We are in a position where inaction could lead to the decline in the status that we have long enjoyed. The board must increase its engagement and communication with the community so that we can all work together to achieve a school system that has a place for every student with strong, safe facilities and a robust enrollment, and ultimately, a stronger, better education for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to question number one. All candidates will answer this question. We have six mandatory questions, and we'll go in order one through six. The second question will go two through five, and then back to Jim, so everyone will answer each, all the questions in pretty much the same order when you average it out. So we're starting with Jim and going down the line after that. Question number one, why do you want to be a member of the San Marino Unified School District's governing board, and why should community members vote for you? Jim Barker?
I want to be on the board because I'm concerned about this town. I grew up in this town, and I'm planning on staying in this town, and I believe that if somebody doesn't stand up and start figuring out what it's going to take so that we can not have to get into a position where we're in an emergency trying to raise money with a foundation, we're not going to be able to keep good teachers here, and then the students that are thinking about coming here are going to go to other places like private schools, and I'm worried about that.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Mitch. The reason why I want a third term on the San Marino Unified School District Board is that I want to continue working on the vision and mission for our school district. We have a wonderful mission of pursuit of excellence in academics, arts, athletics, and activities. We will continue to make improvements and meet the priorities of the community, and in a challenging learning environment, we need to continue to stimulate and promote learning and connections in an environment that will engage lifelong learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Lamb?
Thank you. I'm running for the school board because of my three children at home. I have a kindergartner at Carver, like I had mentioned before, so I feel very personally vested in the school district and in the community, especially since I will have two more that will join the school district. Besides my own children, children are the ultimate focus. They are the future, and the future is something that's really worth fighting for. There is always improvements and enhancements to be made, whatever the system may be. So I am running for the board in order to fulfill that and also share my time and share my talents. I have this personal interest of preserving and improving the school district and where it is because of that future that I want to embrace. Thank you.
Thank you. C. Joseph Chang?
I have 21 years' experience as a school board member. The next term, I want to be, as a witness, to help the new administration and also try to mentor for the next generation, leadership, to go smoothly for the transition for the San Marino School District for the next excellent era. Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca Gill?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure can. Why do you want to be a member of the San Marino Unified School District's governing board, and why should community members vote for you?
I'd like to be a member of the board, and community members should vote for me based on my qualifications and involvements. I'm a parent with two kids at two school sites, HMS and Valentine, and next year they will be at the high school in HMS. I have nine years of experience and perspective needed to be a voice of school-aged parents on the board. I have a global view. I look at an issue from all sides and respond in a measured and informed manner. I'm action-oriented. I want to build on the framework of what the current board has begun with regard to an advisory committee for the facilities and push for one for each of the four As. I have a construction and facilities management background, which gives me experience with the entitlement process, critical path planning, and budgeting. The two biggest issues are enrollment and retention, and a comprehensive facilities plan, which I'm well-equipped to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mackenzie Marie Brown? Did I say that right?
Yes, you can just say Mackenzie Brown.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know why my middle name's on everything. Okay, I'll answer the question. I'm invested in this community. My family moved here for the schools, and we have thoroughly enjoyed my son's first year in kindergarten. We've embraced San Marino, and San Marino has embraced us back, whether it be our involvement with the schools as a volunteer, also volunteering for the middle school as well, or our activities with the Little League or the Cub Scouts. We plan to set up roots in this community that will run deep, and we'd like the school district to reflect why we chose to come to San Marino. As a lawyer, I, again, am analytical, and I have to have big visions and be creative in my cases, and I will bring that to our schools. I'm also very practical. I understand the parameters of our laws and regulations and budgetary concerns in which we have to achieve that vision. Let's put it this way, as an attorney, I can read the fine print. I can read laws, and I'm able to interpret them and take action. I will be able to get up to speed very quickly if I am selected for this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two, and we're going to start with Shelley Ryan. Shelley, parents and community members often approach board members with concerns, opinions, and questions about personal incidents at school, school policies, suggestions for changes in personnel, and ideas for new programs. If elected or re-elected in your case, how would you respond to these comments, and what do you do with the information? Shelley?
First of all, I would welcome comments and information. Having community input is very important because it informs the decisions that I make. Having an opportunity to address some concerns also allows an opportunity for us to address something that perhaps isn't happening for the children or for the families. But depending on the concern, I would direct it, the family, to go to the site administrator first, because the site administrator is who should address the issues, and then if it is not addressed, it goes to the next level. Generally speaking, just comments and concerns should not be at the board level. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Lamb?
Thank you. I believe communication is key to having any system work effectively. If it is communicated to me, I am certainly there to listen and also share those opinions and concerns to the board. I believe in order to be an effective board member, you must represent the interests of the people and not your personal interests or opinions. It is also important to instill an environment of openness and willingness to listen to all the different concerns that our parents have. I think that communication needs to be enhanced on all different channels across the board for parents to engage upon. You know, I think that it's important that the social media channels be open for the San Marino School District so that more people can participate and voice their opinions. I actually don't think that there's enough being heard. And with that, I think essentially... I actually don't think that there's enough being heard. And with that, I think essentially communication is key, and we have to listen and be heard.
Thank you. C. Joseph Chang.
First of all, I'd like to address all three wish lists, which the San Marino community parent they've been asking. So for the last four years, but right now, in 2021, we are able to address, so like due enrollment in 2021, and also CTE, and lastly, is for establishing the live streaming capability for school board meeting for open section to encourage the community participation. And besides that, I want to say, I think the community people count on me, give me the confidence. They always want to skip up from the school district to me, but I follow the protocol. When I have some concern from the parent or student, so I will always refer to superintendent or the district cabinet because we need to follow the channel comment.
Joseph, we have a stomp. Thank you. Sorry about that. Next, Francesca Marie Gill. Mackenzie told me not to use the Marie. Francesca told me her middle name is Marie. So to satisfy my OCD, I have to call somebody Marie. If you don't do it, I'm going to call him Joseph Marie Chang, so.
I was going to say Mitch Maurice.
No, it's not guaranteed. Maybe. We'll get there later on, I'm sure. Francesca, thank you.
Okay, so as a parent, I am one of those moms who shows up. I feel like I am very deeply engaged in what our kids are doing, in the various activities around town. So I'm here to listen and also most likely personally experience most of what the parents are talking about. However, the board has two main functions. Number one is to hire a competent superintendent who will act as our general to enforce our policy. I feel like we have a great, very competent superintendent in Dr. De La Torre, and we can all feel confident in what her actions will be. Secondly, is to set the budget. So we need to follow policy and trust who we've put in power to follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Mackenzie.
Thank you. I would welcome comments or concerns from parents and anyone else in our community because the board can't know it all. The community elects the five of us, and we are here to represent you. But I think if the communication from the board goes out to the community and the parents, the communication will then flow back to the board. I think that's very important because in addition to hiring and budgeting, the board also sets the vision, and the best way to set that vision is to receive feedback from the community. I do agree that there is a procedure and a hierarchy in which concerns can flow from the parents up to the board, but if I'm out at a school function or an event and a parent or a friend comes up to me and addresses a concern, I will share that with the board at the next immediate time that I can so that we can address that as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Berger.
I served as president of Boy Scout Council here locally, and we had a board of directors, 50-plus people on the board. And I think that if you are on a board, whatever size of the board, you have to be approachable. But you also have to never react, you need to respond. So you listen, you take in the information, and then when the time's right, you meet with your board, you have conversations, and then at that point, you direct the staff, in this case, the superintendent, on what may be an issue or may not be an issue. But you certainly can't go off and act on your own. Everything has to be done by the board so that the schools run properly.
See, question number three. Joanna will start. Describe an example of your leadership experience in which you have positively influenced others, helped resolve disputes, or contributed to group efforts over time. Joanna.
Sure. In my previous professional experience at FINRA, I worked in the dispute resolution department, so I was actually frequently involved in many different disputes. As a person in that corporation, I was also a leader of an employee resource group that we created at there, which is the Asian American Resource Group. It was a group used to basically enrich and also motivate others to step up into roles, to be willing to speak up, and also share what their vision and what their abilities are. Oftentimes, the Asian American group is probably viewed as, has a stereotype that you are not very vocal about your causes. And in that group, I was able to motivate many others to speak up in terms of what their accomplishments are and come forward professionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
As a retired hospital administrator, I have extensive experience. Please refer to my website. You can see for my 30-year, I'm working for more than 25 volunteer organizations as a board member. With that, I want to tell you, I am the one that different from the other candidate because everyone can contribute their ability and knowledge. But I'm the one, because I'm the hospital administrator, I remember the previous publisher said, if you can run a hospital, then you can take care for the school district. I did 21 years. I'm still here. Thank you.
Francesca.
So as executive vice president of the Valentine PTA Board, one of the main roles is being in charge of allocations. As you can imagine, there were many requests and conflicting opinions about where we would spend our rather large PTA budget on the school. I see that board as a microcosm of this board at large and working and collaborating with many of the same people and getting along with them very well over the last nine years.
Mackenzie.
My job as a prosecutor with Los Angeles County encompasses all areas of public service when it comes to receiving justice for our victims. But one thing that our office does is we go directly into schools, to fifth-grade classes, and have a program called Project Lead, where we teach students in underserved schools about having positive relationships and views with law enforcement, the judicial system, how to avoid gangs, and basically promote them to go to college. That has been incredibly rewarding to see these students come to class, meet with them once a month, and work them through lessons designed to achieve what we're also trying to achieve for all San Marino students, and that's a bright future with higher education or other careers and endeavors that will set them up for success in their lives. I'm very proud of my work with the Project Lead community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim.
As some of you may know, I'm a contractor. I work on projects worth hundreds of millions of dollars. If you can look at me, you can see that I'm out on the job site every day, and I'm the translator between the owner, who has no four letters, and the guys out on the job who have a lot of four letters. And I also deal with the building department and health department, many different departments. And at the end of the day, when you sit there and you look at some of the projects that I've worked on, a lot of them in Las Vegas that you've been on, those jobs get put together very quickly, and you have to get along. And I've learned to get along with all kinds of people, whether they're tough. I've had people hold a gun to my head, or people that basically are, basically don't really understand the value of a dollar. So I think I have a lot of experience, and I can bring that to the school district. The school district needs it.
The person who held their gun to your head was me when you charged me for my garage door. Is that right? You did a great job. Shelley.
I think I'm going to use my extra 30 seconds.
Oh, yes, the extra 30 seconds!
I don't want to forget about this, so.
I love these. All of our candidates have an extra 30-second card they can play anytime they want. So Shelley is going for the 90-second answer.
All right, Hunter, have you got me? All right. Thank you so much. So it took a long time to get to me, but I believe the question has to do with my unique knowledge, my skill set and my abilities, and what I bring to the school board that will help the school board to accomplish its goals. I have spent 37 years in education. My expertise and experience in education allows me to understand not only the theory but the practice. I know school finance and budgets because I work with it every day. I understand how schools are funded and all aspects of public and private schools. I'm engaged in fostering positive educational experiences for all students, and I'm the only one onstage with an educational background. I have experience in implementing partnerships and programs. I understand how the programs and partnerships will enrich the lives of the students. I understand the impact of the decisions that we make, and I have since, in the two terms that I've served, continued to build on those relationships and bring resources to our school district such as Caltech, USC, KEC, Huntington Library, Mental Health Services, and Pasadena Community College. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. I might need the 30-second card here in order to read this question. It's so long. Joseph, if you ask me to read it again, our friendship is over. I want to tell you that. Joseph is first. On question number four, school board members must be available to attend public meetings that may go late into the night and might be scheduled with less than 24 hours' notice in the event of an emergency, or with just 24 hours' notice in the event of a special meeting. So far in 2022, the school board has had 12 special meetings in addition to the 15 regularly scheduled board meetings. On top of meetings, the community expects... Where'd that go? The community expects school board members to attend school and community events during the day, during evenings, and on weekends. What are your current work, family, and volunteer commitments, and if elected, how will you... Turn the page. Balance those commitments with your commitment to public service as a school board member. Did I get it in? I didn't see the card. Joseph wants to use the third, extra 30 seconds. I hope part of the 30 seconds is not me reading the question again. Okay, go, Joseph.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to share one example about my leadership. As you know, the 2020 March, you know, the LA County Education, they closed all the school. I was the president. I was with the previous superintendent, Dr. Wilson. So we think about what happened in the future because at the time, you cannot see the no hope, yeah. But we are successfully to reopen the school, and right now, you know, everyone enjoy going back to the normal. So I want to say that I provide the active leadership to support the work of SMUSD COVID-19 comprised team and successfully arranged partnership with the local organization such as KEC Medicine of USC to provide expertise vaccination for teacher and staff to the secure health and safety in SMUSD. Then I want to say, you know, the time to me is not a question because I'm the one having more energy, even, you know, my age may be older, yeah. But I know 24/7, you know, I fully utilize all of my energy and the time to attend all kinds of meetings. So I think I'm the one, I want to be.
Thank you. Francesca.
Thank you. So you've heard about many very qualified people and many involvements and illustrious careers tonight, and I do wonder how some people have the time necessary to commit to the board. As a former construction management and project manager for a commercial developer, I have the experience necessary for the board, but I always knew I would retire to stay home and raise our children. So now, as they are 13 and... Can I use this now? Yeah. As they're 13 and 10, almost 11, they're somewhat launched. I have made the conscious decision to have my children as my legacy, and now I have the time and effort to commit this to the board's many requirements and your children as well.
Thank you. Mackenzie.
Thank you. I do have a family with young children, but my very supportive husband is sitting here in the third row, and while I work outside the home, he stays inside the home. So we've worked out an excellent balance between the two of us. Of course, my family always comes first, but my family is the reason that I'm running for a position on this board. As far as my work goes, yes, I'm a full-time attorney, but I have autonomy over my cases, and I work for an office that encourages work-life balance. I don't think I'd have any problem whatsoever on being available to the board and all the commitments. As far as attending events, I'm already at many of those, having kids still in the school. And I think it's a strong example for my kids to see their mother get up every day, suit up, and go to a job that they're passionate about. That's an example that I will set for them, but also showing them my civic involvement on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim.
The question is an interesting question because it makes me wonder, what do people in this town really want? I believe the first thing that people want in this town is a good education for their kids, the best education, and they don't want to be sitting around having to worry about, like, fundraisers to make sure that they don't get rid of teachers. I understand emergencies, and I completely understand that you have to show up for that. I get up every morning at 3:00 in the morning. I go to bed every night at 9:00. So I'm always available, but I'm always wondering when it's necessary to do certain things. And if there's a need for me to show up for something for an emergency, I get it. But I wonder what those emergencies are, and if we can't stop the emergencies so that we don't have to be running late and we're not reacting versus responding in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley.
Thank you. You mentioned that we have a lot of emergency meetings, and what's driving or what's giving us the passion and energy? I think I can speak for Joseph and myself. It is our passion. It's my life's lifelong ambition to serve the community. I believe this is the ultimate in transparency because being on the school board, you continue to serve, and when you serve the community, you have to do it 24/7. You're accessible, you're available, you're at community events, school events. You participate with City Club, the Rotary, PTA examples and functions. Just this weekend, I was at Valentine Fair working to raise money for Valentine children. And so we do it with passion and with love for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna.
Thank you. In my previous occupation, I was the CFO of a corporation where I led a successful acquisition. During the acquisition process, I spent easily 80 hours working, even with small children at home. They say it takes a village to raise children, and I'm very lucky because I do have a village to help. I have a very supportive husband. We also are very lucky because we have grandparents that are also there to help with our children. And even though they're running wild, the grandparents are still in it and have been great with them. I am a business owner currently, and as a business owner, I have the flexibility to move around my schedule. It means that I can show up in the middle of the day to volunteer for my daughter's classroom. It also means that I have the skill set needed on the board, which includes delegating. I often delegate different tasks and work to our staff. I'm also a decision-maker, both on the macro and micro level. And these are all important skill sets to have as a board of education member. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's collecting cards? Well, hello there. How are you, Basri? Isaac is okay? Kelly's in it too? Oh, Kelly, you're supposed to be... Were you nodding off back there? Kelly's supposed to be collecting audience question cards. Glad we woke him up. As is Isaac. Be sure to turn in your cards for any possible questions. And I want to remind you again that you are going to be asked to vote for three people from this first set of tables, three of these four candidates, and one from the set of two over there. So that's, we wanted to put them in. We wanted to put them in different seating arrangements so you could readily identify how this election is going to go. Three of these four and one of these two. Kelly, you doing okay over there? Thank you. Yeah, exactly. Where are you? South of the border. Your border. Okay, so that brings us to Francesca, I believe. Is that correct? It is, and we are on question number five. Recently, Carver Elementary School had to close briefly due to a failure in its air conditioning system, which the district quickly remedied. Where do you stand on a possible facilities bond measure in 2024, which will be the first time it will be eligible to be placed on a ballot? Francesca?
I think it's something that's very necessary. The bottom line is, the local controlled funding does not cover capital expenditures. And our facilities are in some pretty desperate need of updating, modernization, and just help. So in order to achieve a bond, to have success, we need to establish what the community has a capacity and appetite for, to explain the numbers in a clear and concise way. Then, we should break it down to someone's actual dollars and cents spent per year so people understand. We should work with experts, stakeholders, on the needs and wants for all school sites, and then back into the budget and value engineer the project list to incorporate as much as possible. We need to involve the community along the way, which will include the newly formed Facilities Advisory Committee, and have them provide frequent updates.
Thank you. Mackenzie?
The budget between the state, our parcel taxes, donations, do not cover school infrastructure and school improvement needs. This is necessary to stay competitive with other schools. If parents have a choice of where to send their child to school, and they see that the infrastructure of San Marino USD is failing, they may choose to go elsewhere. It's also necessary to ensure our school's safety, that our grounds are safe, that our infrastructure is up to date. We have a committee, or one that's being formed soon, about what our... Determine what our needs are, and we also should determine what our wants are. If I could use my 30 seconds.
Use the 30 seconds.
The bond measure in the past, I understand, was... It failed. And I think that was largely due to it not being communicated clearly to the voters in our community about what that bond measure set out to achieve. I think this time around, we could tailor one that is more fiscally responsible and one that really addresses our needs first. There's also been talk in the community, as I've gone out and addressed this with various people, about establishing an endowment. I also support that. However, I do think it may take years or even a generation for that to be robust enough to, you know, really support itself and fund our infrastructure needs. So I do support a bond measure, but I would like it to be concise and clear to our community about what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you. Jim?
State money, foundation money, money to run the schools, air conditioning at Carver. I said on that, the original committee, that we predicted this would happen at Carver. We predicted that we would need to pass that bond measure. People didn't understand that that bond measure wasn't where we were to spend $200 million, but what it was going to do was put $200 million aside to where a committee, based upon direction of the school board, would be able to direct that money where it needed to go. If that bond measure had passed, that air conditioning would have been fixed. I fully support the bond measure, and I believe that if the bond measure was passed, again, if it is on the ballot, that there should be a committee that layers underneath that to handle that money and make sure it's spent to take care of the facilities. That's why this bowl is empty.
Slide me a little here. Crim de menthe, if you would, please. Shelley?
Thank you. I've spent some time thinking about the issue of our facilities and the need for a bond, potentially in 2024. We will need a committee to study our aging facilities and understand the cost of maintenance versus building new. When we talked about the breakdown of the air conditioning, are we replacing it or are we repairing it? So there are different costs involved, and if we are just looking at repairing it, what is the cost later on? The fundamental problem is that facilities is not funded locally, and the money goes to Sacramento. In the 25 years, we've relied on the goodwill of the community to provide monies. And so at this point, I would ask that the community will determine the priorities. We will listen to the community and determine what is best in terms of a bond. That is true transparency.
Thank you. Joanna?
Thank you. While I believe a bond measure would be a good initiative to have in the upcoming 2024, I believe that there are other solutions that we can address the budgetary concerns. One thing that I've had given a lot of thought of is actually having additional enrichment classes at the different school sites. Can I use my extra 30 seconds?
Sure.
So I think this is a two birds with one stone type of deal with enrichment classes after school. Currently, my daughter attends Chinese school at Carver, and every month, we have a monthly fee that we pay that goes towards these enrichment classes as well as, you know, ensuring that our children are educated. But I think it's important to understand that the school is operating up until 2:00, 2:30. Ideally, from 2:00 to 5:00 or 6:00, there is that time period where students can continue to be enriched. Education is no longer only about learning to read and write and adding and subtracting. It is about using engagement activities that challenge the student both mentally and physically. These enrichment activities could include gardening, a scavenger hunt, hikes, or learning different sports. And the school's facility can be utilized for different programs to teach children ballet and whatnot after school. This will also allow parents to have their children there at a more reasonable time for pickup instead of at 2:00 p.m., which is in the middle of the day.
Thank you. Joseph?
When the superintendent mentioned about the Carver issue, I already heartbroken because that's the reason, you know, that I need to run one more turn to finish my last agenda for the community. As you know, this is a smaller school district. We don't have enough of the funding, which is a general fund. As you know, the general fund from LCFF, only about 63%. And if you look at our expenditure, you know, the layers are about 80% for the employee benefit and the staff fee. So end up, I think the bond is only the issue. As you know, the current bond will be finished in 2025. So end up, we don't have money to need to pay. So end up, I think this is an opportunity we need to get together, see what kind of bond size we can afford to vote.
Thank you. Francesca?
Did I not go already?
Oh, I'm sorry. You started this, right? Oh, man. Where's my extra 30-second card? Okay, here we go. So this takes us to question number five, I believe. Six, thank you. How would you assist in cultivating the board's working relationship with the city of San Marino and community organizations? Mackenzie?
I would assist with that by reaching out to those partners and other community organizations, and again, collaborate and listen to them about what they think they can bring to our schools and how we can help facilitate that as well. I've reached out to several of those people in our community as I prepared for this election. For example, we are putting together an assessment with a professional company to assess whether our schools are safe with their buildings and what we can do to shore that up. I think we need to work with Chief Encanto as well as our fire... Head of our Fire Department to ensure that that assessment is actually put into action. That's a perfect example of how the board can work with our community partners and our community safety partners to achieve what's best for our students.
Sorry about that. Sorry? I was interrupted by the president. Jim?
If you sit there and you look at this, this is one community. And so the Board of Education should certainly get along with the guys that are around this town. And that's important because if we don't have a revenue stream besides our property tax, this town is a goner. If you drive up through Sierra Madre and you see the little restaurants open and everything, that's extra money that's going to that town that we don't have in this town. And I believe that we really need to figure out a way to work with the city council so that we have other revenue streams, because those revenue streams come into the school. If you sit there and look at the numbers on the communities that have other revenue streams like Beverly Hills... Beverly Hills gets almost three times the amount of money per student that we do because of that revenue stream. It's critical that we figure out how to get with the city council and figure out a way to make more money in this community so we don't have to depend on the foundation and we don't have to worry about emergencies.
Shelley?
Thank you. We have been cultivating relationships through the board, working with the city and community organizations. We are very active in the community in joint projects that benefit the community. I participate in the City Club, the Crowell Public Library. I'm on the Friends Board. I attend events with the Chinese Club, and I meet with the city regularly during the city talks, Rotary, and at Huntington Library. We have a joint project presently called DIB, which stands for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. It's an anti-bias group that is comprised of many members from the city council, the police, Huntington Library, Fire, Chinese Club. And we... I am looking forward to continuing the work and building those relationships and connections.
Thank you. Joanna?
Thank you. I think it's important that we enhance the social media initiatives of the city in order to increase participation and increase involvement within the community. Oftentimes, I know that San Marino is a very small community, and there are a lot of different very involved projects that people attend to, but there are a lot that I wasn't particularly aware of unless I go searching and digging. So I think in that respect, we could enhance that involvement using our YouTube. I have looked at the YouTube page. The subscription on the YouTube is... Could be a lot higher. We could also do so by increasing involvement on Twitter. There are a lot of families in the school district that don't necessarily have the time to participate in a forum like this, but if it were live and an open forum online, it may be something that they could also participate in. So I would encourage increasing the social media presence of the city and the school district. Thank you.
I think this will be on YouTube pretty soon. Joseph?
Would you mind repeating the question again?
I sure will repeat the question. It is, how would you assist in cultivating the board's working relationship with the city of San Marino and community organizations?
As you know, the San Marino Unified School District is a serve for the older student. And you know, those are students, the parent, they are the citizen. So end up, you know, we are the smallest community. I think the city and the school district, we need to go back to the old time. We always have a joint meeting quarterly to exchange about some sensitive issue we need to resolve. Just for example, currently, recently, you know, there's an issue about whether, you know, the Huntington Hospital will take care for the ER issue, ER patient issue. As you know, my background, I'm the hospital administrator. So I discuss with the fire chief. We think, you know, we need to work together, you know, present to Huntington Hospital CEO to talk about how to resolve this issue, not to accept the patient from the ER.
Thank you. Francesca?
Okay. So obviously, it's very important to have everyone on the same page for these common goals for the success of our schools. The main focus that we need to keep the doors open is enrollment and retention. So we need a strategic marketing plan to create a more user-friendly interface on our websites and have programs in place to welcome potential new families. We do a pretty good job of welcoming families once they're here, as you've heard from the two new families up here, but we need to get them here. Internally, we need to integrate and involve students from K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. And the city council can really help us with the city events and having kids of all ages at different things. We really work well with the police. They do a great job of keeping our kids safe. Just this morning at Coffee with a Cop, I was told that they actually assign a specific officer to each school site so that they know what's going on from day to day. Thank you.
Thank you. Coffee with a Cop? John, were you there?
Yes, sir.
All right. Where was your stop?
Start.
Oh, man. I'll tell you, I stayed up in the mountains a little bit too long. I would have loved to have joined you for Coffee with a Cop. And we're going to audience questions now, if you may. We're going to go in the same order, and everyone's going to have an opportunity to answer this question, starting with Jim. Were these a minute answers? A minute? Same thing. Okay. With the rise of antisemitism throughout the nation and the denial by some social media that the Holocaust never happened, how would you make sure that every district student learns the true facts about the Holocaust and its existence? Jim?
Wow. I mean, that's taught... That certainly should be taught in history. If it's not, there's something wrong in this country. I don't know how they get around that. That's why we went to war in Europe. That was the reason we had a lot of guys die on Omaha Beach. So if that's not being taught, that'd be pretty concerning to me.
Shelley?
Hi, thank you. This misinformation is very important and that we do address it. It begins in the classroom, the conversations between the expert in the classroom, the teacher, leading the discussion with the students, and also having robust conversations even within the larger school district, perhaps with assemblies and other activities, as well as city Y. So if an issue like that comes, it is incumbent upon the school districts and the schools, depending on the age level, to make sure that we address those issues and that things are clarified because it can be very confusing for children and misinformation can spread to other things that we do not want to happen because it could change the culture of the school and the way in which we react to each other. Being responsible, respectful, and building those relationships is our focus.
Joanna?
Thank you. I think it's important for such a subject definitely to be addressed to our students as part of the curriculum. It is important to remain transparent. Just most recently in June, when we had that Texas shooting, I made very sure to explain to my five-year-old because I think it's very important to be honest and transparent about all the things that are happening in this country and in this world, including such an event like the Holocaust. It's important to remain in open dialogue and to explain, no matter the age, there are age-appropriate ways to explain a certain issue. And you may think that kids don't understand, but they're listening and they know. And if you have the patience to share information with them, they will absorb it like a sponge. Thank you.
Joseph?
As a school board member in the San Marino Unified School District, I always am very sensitive about a cultural issue, and I always like liaison for the school district and to talk about some of the different ethnic group, the parent. Because I feel there is a very important, if we can have a cultural harmony and then we can live together and work together, and then we can expand our plan and make the home safe.
Francesca?
Like Jim, I really just can't fathom someone denying that the Holocaust happened. And I think it's very important that our children learn about past atrocities so they don't get repeated in the future and present day. You know, the conversation seems like it's mostly about parents and values and the distrust of schools teaching our kids things that don't necessarily align with our own beliefs. And that's why I think the transparency with our curriculum is very important. Parents are able to review the curriculum and then comment on it and bring it to the board. It's very important for our children to know the truth about our past, the good and the bad.
bad.
Mackenzie.
This reminds me of the saying, and I'll probably misquote it, but that if we don't study our history, then history is doomed to repeat itself. I think this goes directly to how I want to increase mental health and emotional being amongst our students. We can do this by teaching empathy and to respect each other despite differences. Studying the Holocaust is one lens of which you can do that. I think you can expose children to those concepts at a young age and then work your way up to a course where we're learning the nuts and bolts of the Holocaust in high school. With my work with Project Lead, we take fifth graders to the Museum of Tolerance, where they learn about the Holocaust, as well as other instances of terrible mass genocide, and not just about it, but how we can do to prevent it in the future. I think if we approach it from that angle, everyone will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good question, by the way. We're going to follow the second pattern and go to Shelley first. I should maybe hide behind the podium when I ask you this question. Many of us, I don't know who they're speaking for, I'll just say that somebody feels there should be a term limit so we can get new blood. Do you feel it's time for some much-needed change on the board?
Thank you, and thank you to whoever wrote that question. Yes, I did complete my second term, and I don't know what the right term number is. Is it one? Is it three? Is it five? All I know is that it should rest on the individual decision of the voters. You guys are the voters, and you have a say in how long we stay on. I bring with me two terms, experience, know-how. I have an educational background, and I have an ability to work with people, to collaborate and bring people together. I have accomplished, along with my board, many things, and I have worked closely together with community members as well as other groups in the city. So with that, I would say term limits are up to you, but we need to be very careful in whether we just go for a number rather than for the person.
Thank you. Joanna.
Thank you. I would agree with Shelley that what the term number is rests upon the voters themselves. It should be something that is decided as a whole based on what everyone believes it should be. However, I do believe that change is important. I believe change, the world is constantly changing, and we're moving on a scale where change is positive, change actually helps a situation. Most people are adverse to change, but it's needed to keep us moving forward, to teach us how to adapt and develop resilience, and to allow room for growth and learning. The change that we experience on a daily basis can help improve any system, so I do encourage change in my own life and in others as well. I also believe that a lot of these changes can be made with changes to the board and change to policy. Thank you.
Joseph.
Whether we want to have a term limit, I think the citizens need to carefully to evaluate and analyze. And also, citizens, you make this suggestion, you need to attend the school board meeting. She, whether there's an order there. After this time election, I've been wait for three weeks, yeah, but nobody is turning the paper. And also, I was asked by a lot of people, asked me to continue. I know when I talk this, it's a sensitive, but I'm the one in a continue because I have a passion, I have a resource, I have the time, I have a connection financially, I'm helping for the school district. So a lot of things you need to consider, it's not just a term limit and a limit of people ability.
Thank you. Francesca.
Okay, so I guess it's easy to just say a number to have a term limit, but like Joseph said, there's not a huge crowd banging down the door to be on the board. I mean, the people up here have stepped up, and we're putting ourselves out there because we do have a passion for this community. And I think that the institutional knowledge and continuity that comes with repeated terms are really invaluable. They have experience and perspective that a new board member would not be informed of, because we don't see behind closed doors. New voices should be welcomed and fostered, and perhaps community involvement first, and then rise to a level of knowledge about the community would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. Mackenzie.
I don't support a term limit. I agree with other candidates who have spoken. I think the voters set the term limits. I do, however, think that it is better to have a board with members of varying perspectives and with children who are on various parts of their educational journey. It's a service to the board to have senior board members who have done multiple term limits, because they know how we got from A to where we are today. They can look back at the history of the board and be able to communicate that to all of the other board members. If we had fresh board members every two to four years, we would lose that aspect. But I also think by having board members of all varying parts of their educational journeys when it comes to their families and children, we can have a more diverse perspective on the board. The board can collaborate amongst itself and really make sure that every other parent, which is really the end user of our product here, is in some way represented on the board by a peer. Thank you.
Jim.
There's not a line of people that are trying to get onto this board. So term limits, I don't think are the answer. I think if things were a little bit easier, if the district was a little easier to run, having nothing to do with, you know, the board itself, but the circumstances we're in right now in this town, I think that you'd have a line of people, because it'd be fun, there wouldn't be a continuous war where you're trying to figure out how to make things work until the end of the year. So I don't think term limits are the answer here. I think that, you know, kind of getting into the boat and rowing all in the same direction and figuring out a way to make it so that the city and the school district are able to function in such a way that, you know, this bottle is full all the time, is going to be great, because it makes life easy for everybody. So term limits are not, I don't think, an answer here.
Thank you. We have another question for everybody, and we'll start with Joanna. "Why are so many residents choosing to leave for charter, private, and homeschooling? Why have you not interviewed each family?" Starting with Joanna.
I think that, well, first of all, I've spoken to my own neighbors, and they've also told me that while their kids started off in the San Marino School District in the elementary schools, going into middle school or high school, they ended up going off to schools outside of the public school system. Many of this that I've heard from neighbors is due to the engagement and enrichment of classes that are offered at the higher levels. So, you know, I think it goes back to communication and also listening, which means that I think it's important that we increase engagement, because engagement is an important factor in school enrichment. When a student or their family feels disengaged from the content, they will not recognize the importance or need to study the material or whatever the curriculum may be, which is why I mentioned prior, can I use my extra 30s?
Sure.
Which is why I mentioned that I think it's important to have enrichment classes added to the curriculum, whether it be an after-school program that we could utilize. As I've mentioned, I'm a business owner, and being business-minded, I think it's important that we could utilize a school facility to have these enrichment classes that are not mandatory, optional, but charges a rate for parents to have their students enroll in, because there are a lot of students that actually do have enrichment activities outside of school. And rather having to drive to a different location, it can actually be on school site. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
As the parent always asking me whether our children had to do something or offer them any other program, I always said, "San Marino Unified School District is a unified school district, so we take care for the kid from K to 12." And also, because a public school, we have a different kid, yeah, from the academic kid or the, you know, low-performance kid or the learning, low-learning English kid. So with that, I just want to say to us, the parent, you really need to know what you need to do for your children, you know, in the property. Personally, I don't want to make the comment, say what you need to do, but you really need to know what your child, the quality, and also the learning condition and make a decision.
Francesca.
Okay, so we have declining enrollment, and we have a problem with retention more at the high school than any other level. Some of the reasons that families have said that they've left is to leave for more or less academic rigor, to be exposed to clearer value systems, and to have greater access to teachers, i.e. smaller class sizes, nicer facilities. And, you know, we need to create pathways to success for all of our students to stay here, from the new students and ELDs to high-performing, special ed, average students. There needs to be a place for everyone, and once each student feels seen, they will stay with us.
Mackenzie.
I attended a recent board meeting where this was a concern, and even more concerning was that there wasn't really a system in place to track where those families were going. So I think first, we have to zero in on what is the data. Again, I agree with Francesca. We need a variety of programming so that something appeals to everyone. Our elementary enrollment is actually fairly robust after COVID, but where we seem to see the attrition happen is at the middle school and the high school level. I think that elementary parents often feel like they're overlooked by the board and the administration, and that the focus is always on the middle school and the high school. But by having board members that are also part of the elementary schools, we can address that, so that those elementary school families continue till they graduate from our high school. I'd like to see a robust marketing campaign to all families in San Marino, and especially people who are coming to San Marino, so that when they have the opportunity to choose their school, they stick with us.
Thank you. Jim.
I'm going to circle back and give you an example. The Holocaust question really kind of blew my mind. And so if you wanted to know why parents are thinking about putting their kids in other schools, that's a perfect example. Parents are worried about what their kids are learning right now. They're scared to death about what these teachers may or may not be teaching their kids, and so they're looking for places. I have friends who have grandkids, people that I grew up with, who are thinking about putting their grandkids in private schools, because they don't know what their kids are going to be taught. Second off, they're worried about what's available at the school, you know, what programs are available. You know, somebody talked about, hey, let's get rid of the auditorium over at the high school. Well, we need to have the auditorium, we need to have a drama program, we need to have different kinds of programs. And the reason we can't do it is because we don't have the money, and we don't have the ability to hire teachers that really are teaching our kids about things like the Holocaust. That's like unbelievable. That question blew my mind.
Shelley, did you start this question? Shelley.
All right. Declining enrollment is not a San Marino question, it is a state and a national question. There is declining enrollment in various districts around here, as well as in our state and in our country. The Dr. Delatorre, our cabinet, has been working very closely with the board. We do have data. We are drilling down and looking at the data as to what we can address to attract families. The challenge is to move forward. The children, as you say, the program in the elementary levels is robust, it is full, but in the middle school and in the high school in particular, we are facing extreme declining numbers. So as private schools become less affordable and San Marino Unified School District is able to get similar results and produce a world-class education, we will be able to attract and retain our students.
Thank you. Joanna, you started that question, correct? I think so. Okay. Joseph, we have another question for everybody. "How important is it for board members to have a trusting relationship with the superintendent?" Joseph.
Well, this relationship, just like any organization, company, you know, the CEO had to work very well with their trustee. So with that, then, you know, they work together, then they can decide what is the future plan and the strategic planning, they can be well done. I think if you cannot have a partnership, definitely they need to separate. So that's reason, you know, I'm here, you know, I trust our superintendent. I think there is bright the future, so we can do together and make the children have a quality education.
Thank you. Francesca.
Oh, I think it's imperative that we have a healthy working relationship with the superintendent, and the board should, since they are the deciding voice in who is hired. Now, the board really does manage through policy. They set the what and the why, while the superintendent takes care of the how and the when. So the board shouldn't get caught up in the minutia of the day-to-day managing. That's her job, and we need to have a global view of the school district, give general guidance for district operation, while the superintendent can take the specific procedural steps.
Thank you. Mackenzie.
I absolutely agree that there needs to be strong trust between the board and the superintendent and vice versa, because it's a symbiotic relationship. The board sets the policies and the overall vision for our schools, and the superintendent is tasked with carrying those out. Without that trust and that relationship, the vision can't make its way down to our students sitting in the classrooms. I'm glad we have a superintendent who has a strong history with our schools. It shows that that relationship has been built over time and can continue to remain strong.
Thank you. Jim.
Along great with her, so that's a no-brainer. This is like a road. You've got guardrails on both sides of the road. That's the board. Superintendent's driving down the road, stays inside the guardrails, we're good. I have no problem with that. Circle back to, I mean, if we had an extra $28 million in our school district, we wouldn't even be here tonight, and Linda would have a walk in the park every day. She could dance around the campus. That's the problem. We get ourselves to where we're fighting with each other, where we really need to figure out how we're going to get this money, so that we can operate our schools like Beverly Hills or anybody else does. $28 million is like all the difference in the world. I mean, we could do all the stuff we want to do, we could teach about the Holocaust, and we could actually give a better education than any public school, and people would want to move here again, like when my parents moved here.
Thank you. Shelley.
Thank you. I've had very good working relationships with all of the superintendents that I've worked with. It is true that we need to continue to work on building a trusting relationship, one built on honesty and frank conversations. It is incumbent upon the board to ask for information to inform our decisions, but more than that, we have to trust in our superintendent to be the CEO. She is responsible for ensuring the goals and objectives are identified and pursued. She is not only supposed to accomplish her roles, but she is expected to exceed them, so it is a challenge. She manages the day-to-day operations, and she carries out the goals and objectives that we advocate for. And she is our biggest advocate for children and their experiences. She works tirelessly. So yeah, I think we have a pretty good relationship.
Thank you. Joanna.
All of the above. It is absolutely important that the board and the superintendent have a very trusting and great working relationship. The superintendent was appointed by the board for all the great qualities that a superintendent must embody, which includes being a visionary, being able to see the future and the big picture, being multi-skilled in that the superintendent is trained in more than one area, being able to understand the financials and the operations to run a school like San Marino School District, being communicative and being ambitious and committed to what we want to carry forward to make San Marino School District as strong as it is right now. The relationship between the board and the superintendent is interdependent. We each play a role, and we each play an important role, so trust and communication is very important between the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph. You started this one? Okay, very good. The four A's for me are, they start with attention deficit There's, the four As for me are, they start with attention deficit disorder, they go to absenteeism. Okay, so, okay, so Francesca, you're next? Okay, very good. Related to the previous decision of the amount of a bond measure, three numbers were proposed to the board: 88 million, 134 million, and 200 million. What amount would you have chosen? Please explain your number, Francesca.
Can you repeat what the three?
I sure can. The three numbers were 88 million, 134 million, and 200 million. What amount would you have chosen and explain why?
Well, I would have chosen less than what failed. I think, I think success of the bond and the amount of effort and time and resources that go into formulating what goes into it is the most important thing and bringing the community along. That number really wouldn't be up to me. That would have been something that the community would have had to buy into upfront. And I think maybe at the time, that focus got away from the group and maybe not listening as well. But also, I think sometimes people that are not behind the closed doors of the facilities committee don't understand the true needs and how dire our, our, our school sites are.
Thank you. Mackenzie.
Thank you. As a board member, you probably want the 200 million because that's going to do the most for our schools. But it's like any negotiation, like I deal with in my work, there's a high number, there's a low number, where's the middle? What can all parties and stakeholders agree to? That's the correct number for a bond. We can reach that number by having another facilities committee because we have to know why we need the number we're asking for. And we've got to open up the closed doors of that committee. Once that committee has made its decision, let's find a way to disseminate that to the public in a way that is readily accessible and in a way that is communicated clearly. If we work together and collaborate as a whole, I believe we can pass a bond measure that will be narrowly tailored to our needs and also include our wants.
Thank you. Jim.
That's actually not a fair question for everybody on the stage because nobody's served on the facility committee except for me. I will tell you that I would have recommended the 200 million and it didn't mean we were going to spend 200 million, it just meant that the money was going to be available so we could do the things we needed to do. And that was what was not understood in this community, that it was not going to get all spent. But the bottom line is you're talking about 100 homes in San Marino at $2 million bucks apiece. You have no idea what the construction cost is for a school versus any other place, building a house or anything. Those numbers turn out to be low numbers in today's market and the facilities committee was right on the money on a lot of issues. So the 200 should have been approved, it should be approved now. And it means that we're not going to spend 200, but it's going to be available so we can do some projects.
The number needs to be determined by the community. Bonds have to be approved by the community, meaning the community needs to have a say, needs to understand how the bond is being spent. It's not the right number, it is the right number for the community. And so with that in mind, when we started out looking at a bond, the costs of construction, the costs of maintenance might have been X number. But now, several years later, it is doubled and so that number may not even be reflective, the high number may not even be reflective. I would agree with Jim that what costs, you know, 200 million or having the ability to have the bond for 200 million in 2019 is very different in 2022 with the rising costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna.
Thank you. I think in order for us to come to a number, we must do a very detailed financial analysis and budgeting. The public of the community must be educated upon what needs to be spent and why it needs to be spent. The needs of each school and the school district should be listed and discussed in lengthy detail with complete financial analysis from month to month and year to year in order to determine how much is actually needed. When you're given a number like that, it's so easy to choose the higher number and mostly in a business, when you are given a number like that, you end up spending that amount or even more. And with today's global supply chain shortage and rising costs and many other different factors, it's important first to educate the public and also do all of the analysis and budgeting that we need to do on our end in order to come to a final number. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
What is the right number? I think it's not easy, easy to say. So I think we fear the bond election in 2020, but the time, I think 200 million was the good number. But right now, even you put a 200 million, you cannot get some reward from the before because I think the interest rate been going up and also construction costs also, I think is double. And I can give you the example, like La Canada Unified, they passed the 149 million bond. And the South Pasadena, they have 98 million in 2016. But that depends on what is your facility condition. If you think you will not do again, you really need to aggressively to expand the number, but it's not the full decision only.
Thank you. Francesca, you started this question? Okay, we're going to do one more on the seat of our pants and a 15-second answer so we can get in the closing statements. And so what I would like you to answer is out of the four As, academics, arts, athletics, and activities, which one do you think is the most important? And Francesca, I want you to give us starter answers and then get your closing statement ready. Francesca. I'm sorry, Mackenzie, I apologize.
It's the other Marie. Okay.
They're all important. I know that's the easy answer, but we have to have strong academics for our students to be academically prepared for life beyond high school, but we also have to give something for everyone. I was a huge theater nerd in high school and without it, I would not have excelled in other areas of my life. So academics and everything else.
Thank you, Jim.
They all have to go together. You can't do one without all the others. It's just, you have to have a full-bodied kid that gets out of this school. If you don't have that kid exposed to all those things, messed up for life.
Thank you, Shelley.
San Marino produces well-rounded kids. We believe in whole child and we believe in the four As. It's very important that we have academics combined with athletics, arts, and activities in order to engage the students and help them to connect.
Thank you, Joanna.
It's the four As for the reason because it needs to all be together. Academics, arts, activities, and all of that is very important and which is why I'm excited to have my kids go into this district and do all four, especially the different activities like coding, robotics, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Joseph.
Last school board meeting, we just talked about the four As. So four A promotion will be the main piece for the San Marino Unified School District. I think each A is very important equally.
Francesca.
The four As are equal partners. I feel like academics is where people learn the skills, but the rest of the three As are where the children will find themselves. That's where they have their passion and will apply the academics later in their life for success.
Thank you. And Isaac mentioned to me that I believe we gave Joanna a second card for her 30 seconds, is that right? What are we going to do about that? Apologize to everybody else? It was an oversight, sorry about that. I thought I should pick the card up when someone used it and I thought, eh, you know, sorry about that. Okay. So now we go with our closing statements and we go in the opposite direction and we start with Mackenzie.
Is the time limit again? I'm sorry.
Minute?
One minute?
Two minutes?
Two, thank you. My children will spend the next 15 years in our schools. I want the next 15 years to be the best they can be and the 15 after that and the 15 after that. I am prepared to address the challenges that we are facing with our safety needs, our infrastructure needs, and our declining enrollment. With a broad, strong vision and a practical application of that vision, I will work with the other board members to increase our focus on the mental health and emotional well-being of our students. I also want to ensure that our children are academically prepared and prepared to face challenges that cannot be taught in books. Collaboration is the only way that we move forward. The board cannot decide the fate of our schools from inside of a room within a vacuum. Board members must engage with our public and by doing so, the public will engage back. And with that in mind, we can really be a number one school. I'd like to thank my husband for his support in this campaign. And if anyone has any further questions or suggestions for me, I'm open to collaboration, so please reach out to me. My website is mackenziebrownforSanMarino.com and I hope that you will consider me when you have a choice on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca. Yes, this direction.
Okay, so thank you to the city club and Mitch for hosting this very informative event tonight. It is my hope that I've earned your support as a member of the Board of Education and I look forward to meeting more of you in person. It's clear from this evening's statement that all the candidates on the stage care very deeply about our children. However, we may have differing approaches to our same goals. I believe myself to be qualified, effective, and engaged candidate, taking into consideration my demonstrated track record of investment, commitment, volunteerism, and collaboration within the community. When it comes down to it, I show up. I have been and will continue to be a large presence in our community who listens, acts, and advocates in the best interest of all our children. So if you want more information about me, FrancescaGill.com or give me a call. Thanks.
Man, I need a website, I'm falling way behind the rest of these people up here on the stage. Okay, Joseph, you're next.
21 years as your public servant for San Marino Unified School District, I have a great school experience and know the issue well. Tonight, I'm asking your support to continue my sixth term because SMUSD need an experienced leader to work with a new administration to implement the new strategy plan which current school board just finalized. With my extension background as a retired healthcare executive, I'm much available time, resource, and connection. I can help SMUSD to expand its academic partnership to create a curriculum. I can help safety and the security issue which I have been successfully lead in the compliance of the public health during the COVID-19 stage. I promise to expand on my 21 years of validated excellence in the four As to maximize your child learning and potential, oversee accountable awareness center program development, improve curriculum via academic partnership I have, advocate for your San Marino tradition and promote parent PTA participation to help find and train the next generation as the school leader. Safeguard the health and the future of your child with my leadership experience and the solution, choose Joseph Chen on November 8, 2022, as your school board. Thank you.
Joanna Lamb.
Thank you. Last week, I took my son to our pediatrician for a routine checkup. We started off with small chat, but we hit a chord really quickly and this is something that I want all of us to bring home tonight. There are some things that are not worth fighting for, all the little things, but there are some things that are worth fighting for, which leads me to share this with you. What is worth fighting for? Here are a few things on the top of my list. Love for myself, my children, my family, and my husband. The future, which is also our children, and honestly, if you don't fight for it, who will? And change, which is another big one I will quickly dive into. Change is important, the world is constantly moving. Most people are adverse to change, but positive change is needed to keep us moving forward, to teach us how to adapt and develop resilience and to allow room for growth and learning. The success of San Marino School District should not be taken for granted. We need to learn from other successful schools. Without changes, things stay the same and can remain stagnant. Change can be very empowering and can be inspiring to make life better for the future. If I am elected on the board, I will encourage opinions to be shared and listen to them carefully and respectfully. I will commit to understanding the needs of all parents and those in our community. Please visit JoannaForSMBOe.com or email or text or call me. Thank you.
Shelley Ryan.
Am I on the microphone? Okay. So I'm going to begin by totally embarrassing my family. My family's here, my cabinet, my reelection cabinet is here. Kelly, it's, I'm not talking about you, honey. So.
Justin and Kieran are here.
Justin and Kieran are here and they are my reelection cabinet. So they know that they're building my website as they yell home. All right, thank you. So in reflecting on my two terms and my decision to seek reelection to the Board of Education, I believe I have used my expertise and experience to ensure the best educational experience for our children. I understand what we have to do and how we must excel in at the academics, visual and performance arts, athletics, and in improving our students' meaningful activities and experiences through partnerships with resources from the community. I have at all times focused on our children and remain committed to ensuring they receive a world-class education in a safe, healthy learning environment. I served on the district's safety and reopening committees to ensure our children and staff remain safe by implementing protocols and procedures designed for optimal physical, mental, and social wellness. In fact, San Marino Unified School District will be receiving a Golden Bell Award for our COVID-19 exposure management program. Thank you, Dr. Choi, and you guys can applaud if you want to.
He always gets the most applause, I told you.
I have led and continue to support professional development and innovation in our classrooms. I have also worked closely to examine and manage our school finances and budgets to ensure we have the funds to support the diverse, exceptional programs for our students. And despite a myriad of challenges over the past couple of years, I believe student achievement is not only measured by how well our students are doing academically and socially emotionally, but also on how prepared they are for college and in life. I lost like 20 seconds introducing my family.
You gave up 20 seconds, I lost. I lost 20 seconds because I introduced my family. Okay, I'm going to give this a try. I never got this right when I spent hours per week with them. That's Kieran on the left. What? I got it right? Are you serious? No way, I never got this right. I tried 75 times. Very good. No, you're done. There you go. So I want everyone to meet these candidates in person and when you do, I want you to give a 30-second card to everybody except Joanna. To make it all even. And wrapping up our closing statements, Jim Barker.
I mean, it's fairly obvious that there are great candidates here, there's no doubt about it. City has really good people that are really caring about this, this school. This is a very important time for this, the community, not just the school. But it's kind of one of those things where if, if, if we don't start all rowing in the same direction in this town, that's why are the empty houses here, why are people not putting their kids in school here? Why are we having a problem with, with money here? If we don't all start figuring it out and get on the same team and start rowing together, it's going to be a problem. And not, not a problem like right now, but certainly five, 10 years from now, houses worth $4 million are going to be worth $2 million bucks. And that's a fact. This one time, if you pass this bond measure, and I'm not promoting it, but I'm just going to say, people need to start thinking about other things besides bond measures and, and this, you know, trying to raise money every, every single year in this community. I think we need to be talking about an endowment similar to what colleges do, where families in this town can leave money that can actually start growing and start maintaining the facilities. If we were to raise $80 million in an endowment and we put it to work making 10% interest with the smart people in this town, we would never have to do a bond measure in this town again. So there are a lot of things that I'm thinking about and I think everybody else in this town is thinking about. And I really think it's very important that you look at all the candidates, they're all great candidates, there's no doubt about it. But we're. But what we really need to be looking at is what are we going to do to support whoever you vote for, whoever you elect? To not sit there and try to figure out why it is we're squeezing this money and fighting over this, but what it's going to take to get this community all together to make the kind of money that we need to support this school district. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Isaac and the City Club. Thank you all very much. Thank you to these candidates who did a great job. Fantastic. There are choices to make that you all are willing to determine by this forum. And I encourage you all to meet everybody, attend a coffee, attend a public event where they're appearing, anything like that. But we have got 12 tremendous candidates for city council and school board. And you guys have all given, you know, obviously prepared for this very well. And you guys have made a great showing yourselves. Thank you very much. Thank you to Kenneth White for providing this auditorium. I encourage you to see the candidates, meet the candidates, attend one of their events. Thank you, Isaac. Thank you, City Club. Have a good evening and watch the show. Stephen is going to get it up online on YouTube. I don't know when. This last one took a week. Might take a week for this next one, but it's worth every second of it. Thank you.